All right, good evening. This is the planning board meeting of May 9th, 2017. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this meeting is being brought to you by Area 58 Community Access Media. Well, the first thing we have on the agenda tonight is reorganization of the board. And I guess we'd be looking to start with the chairman.
Yeah, I'll run it because none of you can nominate yourselves, if you don't mind.
No, that's fine.
I'll take nominations for chair.
Make a motion to nominate Bruce Mackey as our chair.
Are there any other nominations? Any seconds on that nomination?
I'll second that nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's all yours, Bruce.
Good job.
Thank you.
Now you need a vice chairman and a clerk.
Oh, thank you for that. Okay, we'll go on to our vice chair nomination.
Nominate Mr. Hoffman as our vice chair.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, do you have a motion and a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we need a...
Technically, you need a clerk.
A clerk.
Um... No, we have one. But by law, you're supposed to have one in case there's no person here.
Okay, you have a nomination for clerk?
I'll nominate Will Sinclair for clerk.
I was gonna nominate you.
I'll second that.
It's whoever doesn't open their mouth first.
The only time I ever beat you to the punch.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Good one, Kev. You got me.
All right, so we did have some reorganization there. Okay, we'll continue to approval not required plans. We have two plans tonight. One is, the first is Paul D. Simkus, 23 Center Street. It's assesses map 103, lot 13 and 14.
Mr. Grady's here from GAF. I think you went through it. You didn't have any questions, so...
Oh, that's right. We had looked at this at our last meeting.
Yep.
And we did have questions, and I think they were answered.
Yeah, because Brian was here.
I'll make a motion to endorse.
I'll second that.
Do you have a motion and a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian.
That was quick, Brian. You'll want the Mylar endorsed, but I'm gonna recommend maybe if you could do the second A and R, I think it's gonna be as quick. And they're here as well, and then you can endorse everything at once. You can stick around.
No problem.
All right, the second is approval not required plan of, it's canal land surveying and permitting for Mr. and Mrs. Sean Bogot Cranberry Road. It's assesses map 131-6R and 131-8R.
Again, there was nothing. I did talk to this surveyor, and they're just purchasing a piece of property in the back. I highlighted it and showed it to you at the last meeting. Oh, there it is, right there. We'll have it. It's pretty simple.
I'll make a motion to endorse. We didn't have anything on that.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now comes the fun part. You gotta sign. You can sign the Mylar right now, and then we can do the hard copy, the regular copies later. If you don't mind. Yes.
Is it just one Mylar?
Two Mylar. One for each. Will's got the... That's a Mylar, actually. It doesn't look quite like one.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
Oh, it is, yes.
That's a high-tet Mylar. That's the phone. And then after the meeting, we'll sign the rest of them. Well, no, they don't have a designated signer. You like watching me, do you?
Thank you.
See you.
Thank you.
I haven't seen them in a long time.
Bye.
Bye. Bye, Madison.
You're just getting comfortable.
That's awesome.
All right, next under discussion, we have Route 44 Development LLC, 3-4 Park Ave. Off Montello Street, assesses map 20-2. Mr. Hunter.
Well, at the last meeting, you closed the public hearing. You instructed me to draft a decision, which I did email to you. I do wanna... What you have in front of you is a revised one that you haven't seen, and I just wanted to go over what I changed. It's very minor, but just so you know what you're gonna potentially vote on. The first item would be on the conditions, number seven. My original draft said any revisions to the plans, and I put significant revisions because any minor revisions would be a minor modification, not a full special permit. So I thought that was appropriate. The next change is number 12. They had put in the application 7:00 AM, not 8:00 AM, as I put in there. Number 14 is about, and I took this from the previous decision that was done here, that they're tracking soil, and I put on the Park Avenue, but Park Avenue's dirt, so how can you... It doesn't really apply, so I just left it as Montello Street. On... Okay, number 21, which I think, I think I got this. Trucks will be limited to Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to a half hour prior to sundown or 7:00 PM, whichever is applicable and not on holidays. I think that's what you guys were talking about. And I think that is it. I wanna make sure we got the one Will wanted. Oh, two, two of them. Well, I'm bouncing around, but go to 25. Prior to the start of Phase 2 operations, the applicant shall submit an application to the earth removal committee under the remediation clause of the earth removal committee bylaws. And then there was one that I think Mr. Sinclair discussed regarding...
No.
Oh, number 13. ABC processing hours, 14-day written notice will be provided to the planning board prior to the commencement of any onsite processing of asphalt, brick, or concrete, ABC materials. Any single processing period for ABC shall not exceed 30 calendar days in length from the start of processing operations unless subsequent notice is provided to the planning board and approval for an extension is granted. I mean, you guys talked quite a bit about that one. I think I got that one.
Yeah, you got it.
And that's what I have.
Mr. Chair, through you.
Mm-hmm.
R and I account.
Glad to answer that, Mr. Sinclair. You have a representative from Route 44 here. They are in arrears $5,512.69. Do you have a recommendation on where we should have them? I might... Well, I would suggest two things. One, I would suggest if you're prepared to vote, you should vote because you only have 14 days to vote.
Yep.
And since you have a representative here of 44 Development, I think you might wanna have a discussion about that.
Okay.
I need the representative for the office.
Awesome.
I can help out.
If you could, if you could sit in the chair and give us your name, please? Thank you.
John Simpson with Charter Contract.
Hi, John. Essentially, we have a review and inspection account that, for everybody, not just you, and they pay into it, and then our peer engineers or soil scientists, whoever we need, we hire to look at what you're proposing.
Sure.
And through the accounting, and I can give you this, you're in arrears. In other words, we've used more money than you've given us.
Okay.
So... So I'll let the board go from there.
So basically, the, our decision, we voted on this, and now we'll vote on the conditions?
Mm-hmm.
But prior to the, I think, the board, prior to them being able to accept these conditions, the R and I account must become current, and we should have more money in the R and I account. The initial R and I account was how much? Do you remember?
Um...
Do you have it there?
I do. Well, there's been many deposits, all the way back when I was here in September, so it's hard for me to add all these up, but it's 55,006, probably 8,000 bucks.
Okay.
Here it is. It's $9,594.33.
Okay, so it was 9,000 plus? So 9,000 plus, and we're another 5,000 in the rest, so it's basically $15,000 is what, on the initial Phase 1 permit? And this is a substantial increase on the amount of fill and activity that's gonna take place there? So I think that we should have a discussion on the amount of money that they should be putting in the R and I account. You know, they're behind on the fives. They've always been good on paying whatever. We needed more money and stuff like that, so I'm not concerned about that. I'd like them to have something in there as we get going, and whenever we need something, we can always ask them, you know? I don't think, out of the realm, on my opinion, of somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000 to be placed in the R and I account is that much to ask for. I think it's gonna give us at least $5,000, $4,500 that's gonna be in there, and it'll bring them current. You understand what we're looking for? I know it's really not your realm, but...
Sure, sure.
We'll have Mr. Hunter send out an email to the property owners of Route 44 Development stating all of this.
Sure.
I think that's certainly reasonable.
If I may comment, you know, since I've been here, they seem to be good on what they say they're gonna do. Most of the engineering from Fussin' O'Neill is done.
Yep.
But there may be some things, and I think 10 is more than reasonable.
Yeah, that'll be...
Now, you do have a condition in here that any outstanding balance in the R and I deposit shall be paid immediately by the applicant. Failure to do so in a timely manner shall, at the discretion of the planning board, require the applicant to cease and desist all operations. So you always have that. That's your standard condition.
I just think that, you know, it's a good number. It's gonna get us about $4,500 bucks in there after they come current.
And John, when you're done, you get them anything back?
Sure. I mean, obviously, we worked very well with you folks, so if we owe anything, then I'm
sure it's just either an oversight or what have you, and I can certainly in the office tomorrow relay the information and get current as quickly as possible. And then as far as the extra 10, or whatever it might be, just to be able to relay that in written format back to the owners so that they can get some feedback immediately, a few folks. That shouldn't be a problem. And do you have a copy of the permit?
I do. I'll give it to you right here. I can email them this tomorrow with whatever. I think 10 grand total will get you at 45 plus. I don't think you're gonna need it unless there's a problem, and luckily, we haven't had any.
Copy of the permit? Did you just go email copy now?
I sent it to your engineer, Bruce, but they haven't voted yet, so I can't give you anything yet. If you stick around for a few minutes, I might be able to.
So I don't know how you guys feel about that. That'd be my recommendation, anyway.
I agree.
I agree. I think that's a good idea.
It works.
I don't think you need a vote. I think the message was sent.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the conditions for Route 44 LLC Phase 2 special permit.
Second up. Have a motion and a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
The chairman has the original?
Okay, and we have to, so why don't we do that right now?
Yes.
Before we forget.
Thank you.
We'll file that with the clerk tomorrow.
He'll send off an email for the 10 grand.
Yep. I'll do that tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I guess, I guess you're all set.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Bruce, I am wrong. You signed one. I can keep that, but there isn't a more original one here.
Oh, okay.
That was my bad. Jill's so good, she gave me an original. But we can always use another good copy. I'm surprised Will can sign anything. His arm's so sore.
I definitely saw. Definitely saw.
All right, we may as well go on to see the next under discussion is the Serpents Department appointment.
Yep. As I told you at the last meeting, but we didn't have it on the agenda, there is a request for an appointment from the planning board to Serpents. Your current appointee is Mr. Mackey.
Bruce, you wanna continue doing it?
I'll continue doing it.
Make a motion to appoint Bruce Mackey as our Serpents appointment.
Second up. You have a motion and a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Bruce.
All right, on other business, planning board member notes.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'll be short and sweet. Just a little update. Got notification yesterday from the state that the urban renewal plan has been approved. So that's good information for the town and for this board. I'm sure there'll be something else to everybody anyways, but I received it as the ex-IDA chairman, so just to let you guys know, let the public know that that got approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's a good day.
Thank you, Will. Anybody else?
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody from the town that helped in the Zach Kane golf tournament this past weekend, even though the weather was a little bit questionable. It turned out to be a beautiful day, and we raised a lot of money for Zach Kane's scholarship, so just wanna thank everybody.
Great job, Jimmy.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have any interim planning director notes?
He likes saying that, don't he? I do have, you won a technical, or Marlene wrote it for you on your behalf, a technical local assistant grant from Serpents. This is monies that can be spent on planning projects in town. We've been, when I was here during my tenure, we had many of these, and you're fortunate enough to get one. This will be to update the town's priority development areas and priority protection areas, and then use that information for the build-out estimates for the recent master plan that was completed, and to update the existing transfer development right bylaw, which probably could use a little tweaking. No one's ever used it. They're very difficult. But this is ready for Bruce's signature. See, Bruce, you get chairman, you're signing all kinds of stuff. Next in your packet is a, I think, a very nice letter from the Historic District Commission, recognizing the work that Marlene did in her tenure here, accommodating her, and then, you know, just making you aware that when you hire a permanent planner, that they wanna work with them on the possibility of developing the South Carver Historic District. I can tell you, we tried this, I don't know, five, six, seven years ago when I was here. It got some resistance. Maybe we didn't do it correctly. I don't know. I don't remember all that much, but... So evidently, they wanna try it again. So I just thought it was a nice thing to say for your former planner, and she should get that recognition. Next is Linby's Path. I had Fussin' O'Neill go out there and do an inspection. This is an approved subdivision. They're off and running. I was concerned that we weren't having an engineer look at the work out there, and as you can see, there are some things that need to be taken care of. I sent this off to Steve Kudikowski from Webby Engineering. He is aware of it, and he is gonna write a response to this and take care of some of these issues. In addition, I was concerned because I couldn't find in any of the files, both electronic and paper, any evidence of a surety on Linby's Path. Now, I did find a vote that you guys took to release lots, which tells me there was a surety, but I don't see it. So Steve Kudikowski said he's gonna go and find that, so we have it in our records, that's all. On a second note, I met with the developer of Gilbert Estates last week, and we don't have a surety on that. Of course, he hasn't started construction. The appeal period just ended. He is gonna record the subdivision, and he is going to put together his estimates on construction. I'll have Fussin' O'Neill look at those estimates and then make a recommendation to you, and essentially, what you'll do is make an estimate on how many lots you wanna set aside and protect the town with. I have no idea what that'll be. I haven't seen anything. All I can tell you, my short tenure here again, on a very, very limited basis, we're very busy here, and I'm trying to work out a routine so when I come in one day a week, even though it's unlimited hours, and I work at home at night, and I can get stuff done for you, but it's pretty limited. But you're busy. You're very busy. Oh, and for Mr. Robinson, I did talk to the owner of Ground Effects. He didn't realize he was in violation of the bylaw. There's two paths he could take. One was the grand opening path, and the other was the commercial temporary sign path. Both require a permit from you. I thought he'd get in for this agenda. He didn't, but he did send me an email today and said he's preparing it for next agenda. He seemed very amenable. He said, "I didn't know."
I saw the sign was down today.
Oh, really?
Yep.
I didn't tell him he had to take it down. I mean, technically, he probably should, but I'm not that kind of guy. I... I don't know. Well, then, we don't have an issue. Maybe that's a decision he made. I don't know.
Well, maybe out of respect, he took it down until he can come before us.
Yep. That's all I have.
That's it? All right, thank you, Jack.
Mr. Chair, through you. Follow-up on Linby's Path, R and I.
Oh. R and I, actually, I told Will this before. I was wrong, Will. You have a positive account of $19.76, but I can guarantee you, the work that they just did has not been taken out of there, that Fussin' O'Neill did, so this is already in the minus.
All right, so we probably wanna reach out to them.
I'll send this off. This, you will need engineering quite a bit still because that road needs a lot of work, and we, you gotta keep on that. It's a pretty tricky subdivision, so I think we really need an engineer's eyes and ears. So I'll make sure they get a hold of this.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
All right, next, we have the minutes of, we have two sets of minutes. One, the first is March 28, 2017, and April 3.
Yeah, that, that...
Is that a misprint?
That's a misprint.
Should be the 25th.
It's July 26.
Well, actually, the minutes we have, it says 24 minutes of April 25.
I'm totally, you did, yeah, I, that's my bad. You can do two things. You can approve them, or we can repost it. They're both wrong.
Maybe we should repost it then.
I agree.
All right, so it's April, it should be April 25, 2017. That's the last, my first meeting here. And then, if you remember, July 26 just wasn't posted. That's why you didn't vote on them. I did, I'm glad we're here at this. I did send an email out to the attorney regarding these executive minutes. We're not gonna get into that, but I have not heard back from him.
So we'll, so we'll schedule those minutes for our next meeting. Do you have any correspondence?
None.
And our next meeting will be?
On May 23. I will have another Form A. I will have maybe the sign for Ground Effects, and possibly a minor modification for SLT.
Before German, I'd just like to thank Jack for being with us again tonight. I mean, such a great help to have him with us, and he could be here permanently if he wished, but... wished, but, yeah. If he didn't wanna retire. But we thank him for, for working with us for the next, this month and next month. All right.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second up.
You have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.